Hey, we'll call up. November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Williams Town Select Board meeting, new order. First off, to set the agenda, we need to add to under new business, Bruno Cormier, Cormier appraisal proposal. At the bottom of that. Does anyone have anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? Could I have your motion to prove the agenda is amended?
Motion.
Motion, seconded. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Someone hasn't been here before in the back by the sliding door there, there's a laminated thing that tells all the meetings are running. Anyone's interested in looking at it? Okay, any select board announcements? Any public announcements?
I just want to thank all of the military for their service today's Veterans Day.
You're welcome.
Any fast guide? No, nothing fast guide. R W M NASA? Commissions, committees, trustees, and other board announcements? Prover warrants. Warrants, S B two-two-one-one-eight, two-two-one-one-nine, two-two, two, one-two-oh, two-two, one-two-one. I have a motion on that?
We got a couple of questions on the first.
After, after we make.
After we make the motion.
Make the motion first.
Motion. Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Clayton?
Um, let's see. C Ford Professional, I'm, I'm assuming that's that welcome to Williams Town sign thing?
It is Chris Ford, yes.
Now, twelve hundred eighty-six dollars, sixty-four cents, says AFRX expense next to it. Is that covered by AFRX? But there was other things to add it, I'm guessing it would, was that just installed somewhere?
Was what, the signs?
Was the sign put back?
Yep, all of, is the one over by Teddy's that?
Two of the three, we get the post.
The one south of the village headed towards Brookfield is up. The one on sixty-four is up. Um, there's one, the other one is being moved out of the swamp.
Right, I remember, it used to be in the swamp for years.
It's gonna be up by, uh, below Teddy Nichols', uh, garage.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming that's the key place, closer to the keys?
Just past the key.
Just past, the next place, the next big place past.
The guy that makes the keys.
Yeah, past Mark's.
Alright, um, that entered us. CRW Corporation, um, fourteen hundred twenty dollars for tilt bucket fuses labor. Now, that's a, I would assume that's an excavator?
Yep.
Is that the new one? Okay, that's like, didn't we, now we did.
No, not the mini.
We were putting money into a new one already, I would question that, that's why I did. I'm not quite done, I just got a couple of things to do with this. Oh, where's the other one? Um, Sunbelt Rentals, fourteen inch gas cutoff saw. Was that purchased or was that rental?
It was purchased.
Okay, twelve hundred, okay, good. That's like, that's an expensive rental. Other than that, okay, that was it, thanks.
Any other statements? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm excited, there's payroll warrants, ten-twenty and eleven-three, no motion on that?
Make the motion to approve, seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Still says Maria.
She was told to change it, so. I'll remind her again tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Select, uh, approval of the select board meetings for ten-twenty-one and eleven-four.
They're moved.
Seconded, motion made and seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passionate, move papers, you know?
Well, I went through it all.
Okay. Tell me his report, Jackie.
Delinquent taxes out there today are fifty thousand seven eighty-six seventy-five, water is at seven thousand one twenty-five sixty-six, and sewers at twelve thousand five thirty-three forty-seven. The hillside tears water sewer line project will be starting December first. Rob Townsend is still working on the heasement from the property owners. Under the highway department, they're getting the trucks ready for winter, R E tires and wings. Replacing a culvert on McCarthy Road. Seventy-three, seventy-three hundred yards of winter sand has been put up for the winter. Grading, it may already be done. It didn't get finished last week, it'll be rolling into this week in Beer Road, Heber Road, and Yezz Road. And we're still waiting on the guard rail company, everybody. They haven't come yet, but, um, we're coming.
I, I noticed that, I went through Menard Cross Road and went, hm, the markings on the road, that was good.
The, uh, July twenty-twenty-three FEMA, um, still waiting on the CATC payment, which is the administrative costs. And, um, the prorate increase from seventy-five percent to ninety percent has been approved and signed by Biden. That's roughly a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more. It'll be about six to eight weeks before we give that, so that, that is, has been approved. We're just waiting for the money to be, um, sent to the state and then they'll, um, send out the payments. The December eighteen twenty-twenty-three FEMA. Chelsea Road slide repairs will start, uh, December first on that one, and that will be a final project. And then we'll be able to close that out with the, um, with the CATC. And July tenth twenty-twenty-four flooding, um, we're having our RSM meeting this Thursday at the town office. Robar, Martin Road, Chelsea Road are a hundred percent complete. Graniteville Road, Graniteville Bailey Road erosion project will be completed. I think it was starting at this, starting at this week, so it should be done by next week on that one. And then that will, um, be the completion of the July tenth twenty-twenty-four. And then I can close out the CATC on that one. So hopefully by the first of January, we'll have all three FEMA projects, FEMA floods closed out.
With regards to the Chelsea Road slide, uh, that short, short section of Menard Cross Road and its gravel that shortcut to the getting back to main road, that'll be closed starting probably tomorrow, the next day. We need that area to stockpile, rip rapp, stones, stuff, be ready to get started on the project. Still be able to use the main road, but that short stretch, two, three hundred feet, whatever it is, will be closed off. So anybody know about that?
And then back to the, um, the July of twenty-twenty-three FEMA. The town's portion, once it's all said and done, is only going to be two point two percent instead of the fifteen percent. So that's going to be much better because the IRBA, not ARBA, the IRBA money, uh, which comes from the feds to the state, is going to cover the balance of it, so we'll only, um, the town will only have to pay the two point two percent.
That's really good considering all the major culvert projects and stuff we did. We made the town pretty flood resilient now except for a couple of small areas. Didn't really cost a lot of, but get right down to it. Except for our pipe and aggravation.
And then the budget meeting, the next budget meeting, hopefully we can, if it works out, everybody's scheduled December second, which is a Monday.
And Chiver meeting.
Yeah, I think so. One question, I, I know we approved that, the warrant stuff, but, um, your, one question just brought up. It's the final payment, now this is on a Vermont bank bond.
That's the FEMA bond.
So.
That's the money that we borrowed through the bond bank.
But that's paid back completely?
That's the final payment on that, that's been paid in.
It just, it just, that was the other thing I was looking for, but anyway, we're good.
No, we paid that one off.
Final, final, that's good.
We're all set, we, we don't have any more loans out for the July flood. And something like that? Um, that's a question, budget meeting at six or seven, December second.
Six is fine on me, if you guys are good to do it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work for you, I guess, I, you just.
I was asking you.
Yeah, that works for me.
Well, two percent, we'll see if I can be here, that's all I can say.
You're gonna be a few minutes later, so just call me, we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll call line somebody if I'm gonna be a few minutes late, though.
Okay, any, any have any questions for Jackie in the audience? Okay. On to new business, Brush Hill Road sidewalk.
So, I have, there's this little committee at the, um, eighth grade that I had a meeting with their, um, their teacher. It's the community and strategies, um, committee, it's, uh, four eighth grade girls. And Dave and I met with them last, beginning of last week in regards to working on sidewalks from the high school elementary down to the village. Our initial meeting, they're gonna go back and they're gonna do a survey to all of the parents and the kids. Find out who takes the bus, who is a pedestrian, or who gets dropped off and picked up. But what we're, we're looking at is, and I'm gonna ask them if they can come to the December meeting. Is if we can use, there's an actual path from the high school to the, to the elementary, um, that comes down. It's, it's not on the road, it comes down from the high school down over the bank to the elementary school. And what Dave and I were talking to them about is if we can continue to use that path to get them down there so they're not, so we don't have to widen the road. What, what we're talking about is not an actual sidewalk, it's like a pedestrian, it, well, well, it's expanding the, um, you know, like the bicycle. Yeah. Pedestrian bicycle path, but it's actually pavement, so you wouldn't have to worry if we could plow it with the plow trucks instead of actually have to have the sidewalk guy go all the way up to the school and, and do that. Come down through, possibly reinstall the footbridge by your house.
It's, it's kinda still there.
If we can widen it, widen it up to the elementary school, the, the pavement up through there. And it would be more cost effective than an actual sidewalk and have lining there so it's, shows where the pedestrian and bicycle path is, have the footpath and then work with the state to do a sidewalk down in front of your house and straight down to the bridge and come down to sixty-four. I, I have to talk to obviously the, um, the permitting and the engineers of the state in regards to the sidewalk on sixty-four. Cause we talked about just doing a crosswalk with the lights that, like, I don't know, like in Handover, they have those, you push the button and the lights flash and they have to stop and going across and going into the Veterans Park and coming down through that sidewalk that's already there. But just safety aspects on whether that would be doable on sixty-four there because of the way vehicles come flying down that hill. So we're gonna have another meeting with the girls, um, after I talk to the state. And then I'm hoping that we'll have some more information to break forth and then maybe we can start looking into sidewalk grants. Our big concern is if we do the pedestrian bicycle path all the way up to the turn into the high school. There's just so much traffic that goes in and out of there that we don't know if it, it would be a safe spot if it went all the way up there. Plus with Universe there, there's an issue with, with the land and whether we can, could make it work with ditching and, and pavement.
I know from experience dealing with the Universe site, that they, the last deal of that was when they paved everything over. Cause there, there wasn't, nothing supposed to be disturbed or dug into, cause it was a solar project, contemplated to go down that site. And all, all the panels sort of had to mount on concrete blocks.
Right.
They didn't want anybody digging.
Yeah, so, so that's the concern with, with that spot, that's why we were thinking if they could continue to use the path and maybe the grant could be, you know, paving it, so it could just be plowed with the, the gator or whatever they use up there to do their sidewalks in front of the school. Maybe they could just do that right down to the elementary and then connect to an actual, um, safe sidewalk, paved sidewalk down to the footbridge.
Cause the path from the high school, is it going to that little neighborhood where the McLyns live? I just don't know where that path is, I guess. Does it go behind the Universe property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, behind the Universe and then drops down over the hill and then they would, they would cut across to the elementary.
Pretty steep down over there, isn't it?
Huh?
Pretty steep down over there, isn't it?
There's an actual path there, I haven't been up there to look at it, that's one of the things Dave and I are gonna go up and, and look at it, but.
Yeah, a map would be good, cause.
Yeah.
I'm trying to visualize this all in my head.
But right now it's in the works, we had the initial meeting with, with two of the girls and their, um, their teacher last week. But we have to schedule another one, but I'm trying to get all of this other information from the state and see if that path will even be doable. Gonna talk to the supervisor union and the principals and see.
Yeah, so I'm guessing I'll come off of that.
So, Rory and Tiffany Zidane, what do you tend to that?
Well, she initially contacted me because she said that the town took Horace, some of Horace's property way back when. Well, I found the agreement, the, the town did not take their property, it was an actual agreement where they moved the road over. It was back in nineteen seventy-three, I think it was what we found. I don't have the copy with me, it's on my desk. But the, if we can do it the way that we're foreseeing it from the high school down, dropping down over the, you know, the bank that way, there would be a sidewalk there. Because there's just so much traffic going in and out of that, that one driveway there, that there's, there's a safety concern there.
Cory had reached out to me over the weekend with his concerns and, uh, he was supposed to be here tonight, but.
Well, she sent me an email on Sunday night and said that it wasn't on the agenda and I sent an email back saying that it was on the agenda. Cause if I have it down as Brush Hill Road sidewalk, not Heber Road, because it kind of cuts off right there, but.
And maybe it's worth inviting them to that next meeting.
Yeah.
And just looping them in so everybody's kinda on the same page, so they're not driving to one thing and the town's trying to do another.
Are you talking to sixty-four, are you coming down sixty-four or are you going Brush Hill? So it would, it would go from the li, the corner of the library. Sidewalk all the way up to Brush Hill and then we put the, our, our thoughts are is putting the footbridge back in. That's there, that's not safe anymore, so they're not going across the bridge, they're going across the, the road bridge.
Just add on to where Congress House is, the bridge at Congress.
Right, the bridge is by Clayton's.
Right, but it would come down your side.
Oh, yeah, 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 and it would connect to the already sidewalk that's there, yeah. But I have to talk to the state.
Yeah.
And all that fun permitting for that. And while I'm in that, I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna talk to them about your parking lot too. Cause they don't have the permit for that yet. Cause that would have to, if there's a sidewalk there, then that's gonna, you know, affect the parking area too, so.
Yeah. The cross that recently happened.
So we're, it's early stages, but that's, that's what we're working on right now. And maybe when the sidewalk pedestrian, sidewalk grants come back up, maybe we can get in underneath that and get something done up there.
That's good, the kids are getting involved in it.
Yes, it's actually fun, they did a little PowerPoint presentation for, for Dave and I and, um, they had a, they actually had a petition. That students had signed and parents had signed and teachers had signed, so it was really.
So they're gonna do the same for us?
Yeah, I'm hoping that they're gonna be able to come to the December ninth meeting and give, give a little presentation then of, and we'll have more information, so we can, um, we'll fill you all in then, but that's what we're working on, so that's what we are with that.
Good, good.
Anybody, have any, have any comments on that? Okay, uh, Williams Town's new sports ball field lighting?
I'll give you pictures and put them on the screen here, that way it's a little bigger and easier to see. Or, or just an update and then just something we.
Well, it must be great, I don't know.
You close your eyes?
Every little thing he does.
So Clay, is that your head blocking?
It's gonna be right there. So if you keep the glass eyes, it'll be alright. See, I see it right here.
Trying right off. Now, is there light up there, Martin?
If that thing hits off my head, I'm gonna apologize to you guys now, it might be really brave.
Well, that's restarting, um, just an update, so I've contacted pretty much everybody. Benoid Electrics doing the electrical, um, they're basically ready to go. Yes, we have the poles there, remount power will set those. The new service pole's already in, uh, on the corner of the parking lot. And my, uh, forgettable name, Christian. Works for. Yep. I don't know why I can't remember the name, last name, Christian, um.
I'm sure I, I, I have this mail. It'll get worse until I look it up.
Christian, do you work for Kingsbury?
Yes, correct, Brad, Brad, there we go, Christian Brad. He is doing all of the, uh, ditching for us. And Kingsbury is donating the equipment to be able to do that. I don't know, my distance is cutting off in a quarter of the screen. Good, what is this working, you just find?
Technology's awesome.
I don't know why it's cutting off, but. It's green now. Well, anyways, um, you have, I'll just hold up a mic screen to it. So you have the paper in front of you, um, you'll see, and I wanted to put it up there too, so everybody else could see. I apologize, it's a green thing, I don't know why it's cutting off, that's weird. But you have the, of course, the parking lots at the top.
Yeah.
You have our two, three, four fields currently, they're in the black lines there. And then you have the pink box, which is the proposed varsity field.
Five-six field?
Five-six field is inside, so that's, that's the five-six field inside of the pink box is where currently our five-six field is.
Okay.
So the pink box outside of that five-six field is our, where the proposed varsity sized field would be. The two yellow, the four yellow circles, that's where the light poles would be. The, the red line to the left and going across the bottom that has like the squares in it, that's the chain link fence, fence. On the bottom, you have the, the white line going across and Rob did, as we, as we were laying this out to try and be able to see where things were gonna lay and where things were gonna be, um, just measuring it. We were up against that chain link fence, so we said, well, we gotta figure out exactly, is the fence the property line or whatever was going on? So we found the iron over by the, over by the road, found the fence and stuff up on the hill. Um, and that's what the, the white line on the bottom, it connects the, up on the hill there to the left. You got the dash, it was kind of an X in them, that's the, uh, that's the, the fence up on the hill and then the property line going across back towards the parking lot. So. I wonder if I can drag this, yeah, I can't drag it up far enough for that to sit in. Um, so right now, currently it's our, it's, the corner of the, the field that we have is, and that form of chain link fence is actually on town property. Now, this has been that way since long before me, whenever, I think Larry, I don't know, I think he was part of that. But according, according to this, that's, that's already on town property, that, that one corner of the chain link fence.
Right for about quarter of the way down the field.
Yeah, 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 cause that white line is the, that's going from the iron up to the, the barbed wire.
That's the actual line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, really what we're asking, if the town's okay with, um, I mean, part of that's already on their property, but if they're okay with us just where we need to pushing, again, then over there, the five-six field where that chain link fence is, um, you know, it's kind of a hill, it comes up probably three foot in, in elevation. So just asking if it's okay where we need to, to push the bank back a little bit. Um, and that, that one pole would be practically dead center of the property line. So we, we just didn't want to be ahead with anything without showing you guys this what we found.
That's a part of the old dump, dump area, dump can't do nothing but anyway.
Right, now is there anybody else that we could have to contact? Be in the town and need to, to go ahead and do this? No other, you know, okay, I'm just, cause I know there's a lot of hoopla with that area every year, so.
Yeah, and the, the landfill, that is way back away, so it wouldn't be anywhere near close to that, so. Um, it's really, I mean, the, the, the one closer to the basketball court would still, you know, technically be on our property. Um, it's really just the, the farther end there. And then, you know, we'd have to get people over onto the other side to dig and get a pole of the fence and, um, you know. So really just wanted to see if you guys are okay with that. It's really close to the property edge there and right now it's currently a dump park, but.
Yeah.
It's, nobody uses it, it's overgrown, it's.
Yeah, I don't think it's, that's basically, it's basically just a chorus.
Yeah.
So we, probably just to, uh, get some on paper that we agreed to, let's just take a vote on it, just to clarify this. So what you would need to do, have permission to set one of your light poles right on the property line, basically?
Yeah, so, so just be that one, so basically just permission to, to set that one pole that's right there on the line and then any, um, that elevation push of that bank some that we need.
We arrange whatever dirt needs to be.
Yeah, you know, permission for the companies to go in and be on that side to do their stuff they need to. And then my, my only other thing that I'm thinking of is we'll probably have, um, on that side, like side closer to the core, uh, we'll just have a lot of, a lot of dirt that we have to take out. So just, you know, for the moment, I'm thinking maybe we're gonna end up using it somewhere, I think we're gonna try and put a berm, um, up on the far side, the, the red line. This red line here. This red line here is like the cliff edge. But so we're, this would be, you know, pushed back, the bank there. And we're, we're thinking we'll probably just put a berm kind of down this side here, a lot of water comes off that hill. Try to keep it from coming out onto the field. But it, yeah, so we're, we're all just, it's, everything's real close to that, that line, so it's just really permission to step back a little bit, set the poles, people to be get on that side to do what they need to do.
There should be areas above that, south of the property line, is it? With that, oh, dump, no, bitter area there, there's some holes and stuff that you probably get rid of some of that field if you need to.
Yeah, but I mean, if you.
Check with, check with Dave.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we don't have any effort and the town wants it, we're not.
Not that we want it, but we need some place to.
To, to, I'm sure, yeah, I didn't know, you know, we could just stockpile it in the corner over here until we figure out what to do with it. do with it.
This I can do, check with Dave, I think.
Okay.
Well, whatever.
It's not the, uh, waste land down there.
Yes, this, this, my only question right now, is it just the lights gonna cover that field? Is that the plan?
So, so again, the, yeah, so the these four, that's the, the lights, they'll be covering, obviously, the five, six field in the middle and then full size varsity field. Then there'll be lights on the backside of these two poles also going towards the center three, four.
Anything for the baseball diamond, or?
Not yet, not yet, but I did, um, talking with them, we'll be able to, they're gonna, the new let me put this full screen. Um, the varsity high schools coming out. So that, that's been the kind of long-term goal with this, is be able to put this in a.
So you'd like to be at a recreation, good, permission, so.
Oh, if you do.
Okay.
Appreciate you stepping up and doing that. So, do you think we have any questions for Eileen?
No.
It's all good.
Megan, um, is it Sandra?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, P. D'Verna. And I can't remember what the gentleman's name is, but.
Tyler, yeah, Tyler.
Yeah, I can't remember Tyler Vallet. Yeah.
Someone make a motion to?
I make a motion to accept, uh, Eileen Briggs to the recreation board.
Second that.
Most paid executive, any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
Kind of a whole order, but it really, really bugs the hell out of me. Great roads. We still, they're grading last week. And there's still, everyone from three hundred eighty burned right down each side of the road. That water couldn't buy its way on that road, it had to. I can't believe somebody grading, running the grader on the road or somebody supervising somebody grading home.
Running the grader on the road?
Can't see that. I don't know if they need vases or what, but there's no way that water can get out of that road. The road just keeps on washing every time it rains. In the center of the road in a few places, it's higher than the, it's more than the outside edges of the road. I would say rocky sides, guys. It's not rocky sides, and it's not the only road in town that way. And somebody says, go out, drive on the road, take a look, and get some good ditches on South Hill, would have been three years ago. Be awful nice if the water could get somewhere near it. I mean, I cannot believe anybody would be able to, that working on the road, wouldn't be able to see that. I mean, it's just washing and washing and washing, and you got lots of one right down the middle of the road, but the water can't get out of the road every time it rains. What am I missing?
You mentioned a couple of meetings ago, I think.
What's that?
I think you mentioned this a couple of meetings.
I did, and they were up there last week, or last week or the week before, there was a grader. And they didn't do a thing about it. They graded, but the, the wall on the outside edge is still like that, can go up there and take a look. It's disgusting. It's, it's, it's doing a work for nothing. It's throwing money away.
Chris.
Are you talking about on South Hill?
On South Hill, well, I've seen it on the other roads, and I haven't been over the other roads lately, but I've seen it on South Hill, and I just don't know why, I mean, this is a big one for you, this isn't something new. And I don't know why they can't take that berm off, you had to take a bucket of ruppets, go right up, you didn't take the berm off or nothing else.
So, so your concern is the berm that's currently there, 'cause the grader, I can tell you, I am the grader operator. And I'm not leaving the berm, uh, when I grade the road. It's because of the material that has disappeared over the years, the road goes down, the berms stay up.
But if the berm is there, the water can't get out of the road, when you're grading the road, you can take the berm off.
I agree with you a hundred percent, other than the fact that you can't grade dirt into the middle of the road, you can't grade topsoil in the middle of the road.
It's got, it's got a come up.
I agree. I don't know what to tell you other than to, to speak to Dave about that, I know we did a bunch of that, we pulled the edges in on Baptist Street this year, it helped tremendously up there. Unfortunately, with fifty-nine-ish miles one way of, of dirt road in this town, we can't get through it all in one summer.
Oh, my question is that this isn't something that's happened just this year, this has been ongoing for years, and it's getting worse and worse.
If, if I had my way about it as a grader operator, we'd go and do that all the time. Because there's, there's no doubt that it, it certainly helps the road, because if the water can't get to the ditch, you're absolutely right, or it washes out the edges of the road. Um, so between that and a lack of material, um, yeah, I, I completely understand what you're, what you're talking about. And, uh, I know Dave is, is planning on doing more next year. We brought out a time this year, obviously with the floods and, and everything that's been going on, but, um, you know, he would be the guy to talk to as far as.
He works for somebody, and somebody's gonna say, hey, this isn't the first time this has come up, and not the first time this berm has been there. I mean, I'm going back five years.
So, a couple of years ago, we started with Flint Road. Took all the berms off Flint Road. This year, we've gotten the berm, all the berms off Gilbert Road, Adams Road, Baptist Street, um, Menard. Um, and parts of, of Chelsea Road. Um, so we are, we're gaining, every year we're doing more and more and more.
I just haven't been seeing it because, you know, that's the road I travel the most.
Right, you're, you're.
And I haven't traveled the others that much that year, 'cause I've had other things I've had to worry about, but, and I do travel back roads off and on.
So every year, we're trying to do more and more and get the berm off those roads.
Yeah, but it's like, like Chris said, that you can't put it back in the road because it's got much, much in it.
Exactly.
And so it's gotta come off of there.
Yeah, so we are doing that. And like I said, we did five or six roads this year, we did Flint Road a couple of years ago. Last year, we got slammed with the July flood and it just completely blew up everything. Um, luckily, we didn't get slammed as bad this July, so we were able to get a lot more done than, than we planned to do as far as getting the berms off, but that is a work in progress.
Okay, I just, I just been seeing it for years now.
I know, I know, you know.
You know, it's a, it's not a recent problem.
And we're working, we're working to eliminate the berms on the roads. Unfortunately, there's only so many hours in a day.
I understand that, but, uh, I, I guess I have a problem with getting that, being allowed to get that back in the first place and taking some of it off. It's, it's not quite, basically, you gotta, you're gonna take a, a walker up there and a dump truck.
Yep.
But it's not something new, it's something that's been ongoing for quite a long time, but, you know what I mean? It's kinda frustrating that the road keeps getting washed out when you get the berms there, and you get some damn good ditches on some of these roads. And.
Chris, you think it'll work?
And Steve, I do, you know, in, in the places where we can roll it over the bank without it being an issue and obviously looking like crap, you know? I do go through and do that after I grade the road, take the berm off, um, but obviously, as you know, there's only so many places we can do that, so. Um, I can tell you, we're, we are working on it, we're trying, we're trying. So we know it's an issue and we know there's some roads, and, and I think Dave and I just had the conversation last week about the lack of material on some of these roads and, uh, you know, those berms that they gotta go, you know? They gotta go, so, um, hopefully this next spring when things dry up, we're gonna hit it hard and, uh, I mean, honestly, I'd like to spend, I'd like to see us spend two or three weeks doing that. You know, if the floods stay away, the heavy rains and, you know, all that stuff, when we get things shaped up in the spring. If I can, you know, convince Dave, I'd love to see us do that for a solid three weeks and then we can get some stuff done.
Okay. I'll say, the recreation committee's over. The class four road request by Mrs. Joy, David Roan.
So she's requested material for the class four road section, um, that we've got to. For her houses. So she's got, um, a gentleman in town who volunteered to do the trucking for her, she's the one that recently lost her, her husband.
And.
Yeah.
So that's a thousand dollars, like, yeah, Kristen?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, Darnell?
Darnell?
Darnell, yeah, is going to, um, truck it and take his, his, um, machine right there to, to spread it out for her.
Make a motion on that?
I make a motion to, uh, a lot, a thousand dollars of material to, what's her name?
Mrs. Joy.
Mrs. Joy, Carol Joy, for grantee.
Second.
Most paid executive, any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, I'll see if we use the town equipment.
This was discussed, um, two or three weeks ago. And we revised it, this is the one where the fire department wasn't part of it. Um, so we revised it, run it by the road foreman, the fire chief. Um, and everybody is fine with, with the wording.
I've already read it.
Obviously, we took out the section where they have to have some bit of insurance because we're all covered under the same, um, insurance policy, so that portion of it was stayed now.
I've already read it, Sean, but like.
So, with the, with the life signs?
I have a suggestion that we need, I, I make a motion to approve. The policy.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Oh, should I, second, any discussion?
Yes, so my discussion point, uh, historically, and it's kind of in the policy. Uh, I think it is the last sentence just before adopted. I have an emergency and neither the town manager nor the chairperson of this department are available. Please proceed coordinating the use of equipment with the heads of department. So I don't know if there would be a better way to word that, so for, like, the example is, I know we had a call in the fire department last year, don't ask me the road. The ladder truck wasn't able to get up to the road just because it was icy, and Dave, uh, I don't even think they, he got called. I think he was just kinda listening in on the call and heard the ladder truck stuck. So I think it would be a better way to word that as if, like, a life safety emergency with any department, they can essentially bypass the town manager or the chairperson and then report later on as to why they bypassed, so it's a life safety. Same thing if there's trees down in the road and the town garage needs the fire department to come out and start cutting up trees to get, you know, the floods are a great example, I think we all worked well together, all departments within the town. You know, obviously, that was a very large event, but just something that essentially, uh, director to director could talk if there's a life safety issue. That's, that's Dave's job anyways.
We had that discussion that was consensus was that, was this is not for, I know, like, the town, at least called Dave before when the fire truck couldn't get up, some hill was icy or something.
Yeah, that's.
Or like you're saying, the tree across the road or something. This is not for something like that, just for some, you know, emergency comes up or somebody needs to use something.
All right, that was brought up.
I know, and that's always been the case, if the fire department could make it up a driveway, I think it was Kathy, uh, Voice Road.
McCritchy.
McCritchy.
Why?
No, I, no, it was McCritchy, yeah, when they couldn't get up there, I think there was a chimney fire or something and it was icy and they couldn't get up. They just immediately called Dave, and the road crew brought up a load of sand and it's getting out, so.
Yeah, that, that was the only concern, that was brought up.
Yeah, no, that's always been a.
During the fire meeting, and I'm following the policy, it's.
That's always been an unwritten policy, it's.
As long as that's recorded, that that's, that's the status quo, and we'll keep going that way, that was, again, the only concern from one of the members of the fire department, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's always been the case, if fire department can't make it up a driveway, they call the road crew and get sand so they can get up there and do what needs to be done.
Okay. We're gonna have a due discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, post? Okay. We have a proposal from, uh, Bruno Cormier appraisal. Service for the town, townwide reappraisal.
So, um, we have a city mandate that we have to have a reappraisal today. We received a letter back in, in July to that effect. Um, we put out an RFP, looking for proposals, did not get any because everybody is so backlog that the quickest one we could get done would be in twenty twenty-nine. Um, while we were doing that, Kathy was in the process of being put on the certified residential uh, appraiser list with State of the Lot, she is now on the list, um, and can do it. Um, so, um, after correspondence back and forth between Kathy and myself and Barbara Schlesinger from the state and, um, Barbara's, uh, supervisor, um, we asked Kathy if she would be able to do it, and she, uh, will be able to do it, um, for the grand list of twenty twenty-seven, and this is her proposal. Uh, and this is not to exceed, um, the anticipated completion date, the data collection is by October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so it would be um, within the realm for the twenty twenty-seven grand list. And the total estimated contract proposal amount is a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, obviously, this is an estimate because there may be more or less depending on, um, if everybody allows them to go in to the houses, which people don't have to allow people, uh, appraisers to come into their houses. But if they do and they can't do it on the date that she's set for that week, there may be additional costs if we're going back to do that, but we're looking at roughly a hundred and five thousand. Um, this is based on the previous reappraisal information, which she worked on and the number of parcels, we have roughly sixteen hundred and sixty parcels, I think, in the town of Williams Town. So she is available to do it, um, and this is her cost and.
We have a budget item for that reappraisal to cover.
Yeah, we have a hun, currently, there's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in that budget. So, we're, we're within that realm, she has, uh, herself and one other person who is on the list that works under Bruno Cormier and one other person that will be certified by this, uh, at this point to work with her, so it'll be herself and two other people, plus, um, Gordy is willing to work with her to go out and, and, um, get data. At this point, Gordy will be the only one that's still a lister, depending on what happens in March of next year.
One thing I noticed on the backside down that second paragraph, is this town playing field?
Should sit down a week.
Oh.
Apparently, some form of you.
Oh, okay, 'cause she had done the probably is just, like it, but yeah, she just did the, at the town play field.
It's right above ID badges, is it?
Huh?
It's right above where it says ID badges.
Yeah, I got it right there.
This, this probably the.
We, we've already got the badges for our listers and we actually got vests for them, um, that say town of Williams Town listers on them, so they're identified. And we put the magnets for the door, um, of whoever's vehicle they're going out with, so they're.
Putting targets on people.
That camouflage.
That's not camouflage.
She'd probably the other way with that, huh?
Very Rodney, so he's in that.
Rodney.
Well, I, I, I think Kathy would do a good job with the reappraisal. Um, she helped out with the last one. Um, one of the reasons it's, um, in order to do an appraisal so quick. When the property that has jumped up. But many towns have this problem, so. So many towns. They're being required to do an reappraisal, you know, find somebody good. They're being required to do a reappraisal, you want to find somebody that is better last time.
Exactly, yeah.
But it, the, the door hasn't been beaten down for people to come to, for listers from this town for things, so.
There's, there, there.
That's very well aware of.
Rodney's right, there are so many towns out there that got the same letter that the Town of Williams Town did, that there's, there's a shortage and we were just lucky, I mean, she was a lister in this town, she knows, she knows the, the lay of the land too, which is, and she's really good to work with, um.
Some towns that just finished, barely finished their appraisal, or, or.
Yeah, yeah, Randolph just, just finished theirs up, first year finished theirs up this past summer. I mean, there's a lot of them out there that are, that are, that are in the same boat that we are. And the problem is, is a lot of the, the reap, the, you know, appraisers, you know, they're from Massachusetts, Connecticut, New Jersey, which are not felt familiar with Vermont at all, that are coming up here to do it, and I think that's what we got into a pickle, but twelve, fifteen years ago. In Williams Town.
Yeah, it was way, way more money in this too, I think.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So what are we looking for in approval to prove Kathy's gonna be, and her associate's gonna be the one to do this?
Yeah, Bruno Cormier Appraisals, LLC.
Yep.
So, make a motion, we accept that?
I'll second that motion.
Most paid executive, any other discussion?
No, she does good work.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Okay, we're on the old business, we had to, uh, amend the, uh, contract for stipending on Jackie's contract, she's got a, an overmark for reimbursement for her use of her personal vehicle for town business, so, nothing changed, amount didn't change, there's just a, needs to be in writing, and that's what we agreed on. Basically, that's it, so, need a motion to.
Agreed that it's a stipend, not, right? Right?
That's what I was gonna say, I make the motion to amend the town manager's contract. Do you have, uh, additional benefits section two, read, the employer shall pay a saving of three thousand dollars per year, reimbursement for the use of the employee's personal vehicle for town business.
Second that motion.
Most paid executive, any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, close? Okay, there was no other discussion, you, you, you got a table, Tyler, the other one?
Just question, do we actually do anything with the Vermont land trust?
No, that's, it's an FYI.
Okay. There you go.
Save with the one from back.
Okay, perfect.
Scott? Nope. Clayton?
Good.
Tyler, I wish you the best, you have pulled.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all turns out good for you?
Hope so.
Okay, there's a motion right there.
Make a motion to go in here.
First second. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, close?